This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's city council meeting. Today is Wednesday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and I'd like to call to this evening's city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and Clerk, can I have the real call, please?
Councilmember Fox? Press it. Councilmember Casper?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Scriven?
Absent.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
And Mayor Thornton?
President, thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Staying? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, I do have a presentation. We have a plaque for Councilmember Williams. Clerk, if you could please pull up the photo of the plaque.
One moment, Mayor.
If you don't have it, clerk, I actually have the plaque right here. I can just read from the plaque, and I will be presenting this to Councilmember Williams here in the next few days. So I'll just go from what I have here in front of me.
Beautiful.
This plaque is presented to Councilmember Randy Williams in recognition and appreciation of your service and dedication to the citizens of the center, City of La Center City Council, term of service two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-one. On behalf of the city council, the city staff, and our entire community, I want to thank Randy for his fourteen years of service as a city council member and a planning commissioner before that. Randy was first appointed to the city council position number three in two thousand and ten, where he filled a seat that was vacated by then-councilmember Barbara Vining, and then he was elected for two consecutive terms after that. Randy also served in the planning commission from two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten. So Randy, I just, I want to thank you for your many years of service to the City of La Center. That's quite a run. On a personal note, I just want to tell you how much I've enjoyed working with, serving with you on both the city council and the planning commission, and want to recognize the many contributions that you have made as both a council member and a planning commissioner. We've been through a lot this last fourteen years. Randy has been quite, I can say it's honestly, I can honestly say that it's been a pretty interesting run. Lot of issues and changes in the center over the last fourteen years, and I always appreciated your steadfast approach, your collaborative effort to work with all the city council members to advance city policy and initiatives that I think were the best outcome that we could have for our community and the citizens of the center. So, Randy, I really want to thank you for all your years of service and your dedication. You're going to be Miss Randy.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's been an honor and a pleasure, my pleasure, to serve the citizens of La Center as well as the staff and our local government. It's been a fun fourteen years, seen a lot of changes. Pretty much all of them for the best. As you said, we've worked through some issues over the years. It's been fun. I'm proud of the accomplishments that have taken place in the time that I've been on the planning commission and city council, and I want to, again, welcome our new council members, and I'm glad that the current council is able to fully fund the police department, so you have something to work with going forward with Chief Richardson and reestablishing our public safety for our town here. I think that's something that all of us on this call want to see, and I'm glad that the current council was able to help you guys with that lift. So anyway, thank you, everybody. Again, I really appreciate it, and it's been an honor serving. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Randy. Well done. Next on the agenda is citizen public comment. Clerk, do we have any comments this evening?
There are no public comments.
Okay, thank you. Next is the mayor's report. I do have a few things I'd like to share with the council this evening. First of all, just as a reminder, the city offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, December twenty-third and twenty-fourth, for the Christmas holiday, and the city offices will also be closed on December thirty-first for the New Year holiday. My next mayor's virtual town hall meeting will be on Wednesday, January fifth. It begins at six-thirty, and again, everyone's welcome to attend. And then just a reminder to the council that we will be having our city council retreat on Saturday, January twenty-second. So hopefully you have all responded to Mr. Swanson's email, and if you sent out an invite, please respond if you haven't. And then also, also, we are going to have to fill some representation on different boards and the Ridgefield Port District to fill those seats. So the one that we need to really address here right away would be the CTRAN board, the RTC board, and also the Ridgefield Port District. So if any of the council members are interested in serving on one of those boards, if you could please reach out to me, send me an email, let me know if you're interested, and then we can get notice, CTRAN and RTC that who our representatives are going to be. For both those boards, we share the seat with other cities. So it's CTRAN we share with the City of Ridgefield, RTC we share with the City of Ridgefield, Battleground, and Yakult. So, yeah, so please let me know if you're interested in serving on any of those, on either one of those boards. And then also, the Ridgefield Port District will be having a special meeting tomorrow at three P M. It's going to be a joint meeting with, I believe it's both the Vancouver Port and Camas Washugal Port, and that's a virtual meeting. If any of the council members have time to join that, I think it'd be pretty informative. They've got quite an agenda, talking about freight movement, their legislative agenda, and what the ports are working on currently for Clark County. So if any council members can just attend that tomorrow, that would be great. I want to just take a quick second again to thank everyone that participated and contributed to the Christmas tree lighting and Christmas celebration on Sunday, December fifth. It was a great turnout by the community. I thought it was a great celebration. I think everybody was anxious to see that come back after not having it last year because of COVID, and city staff and all the people that contributed to it was, they did a wonderful job. So again, thank you to everyone. Finally, I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. I hope you all have a very safe and joyous holiday season, and if you're traveling, I hope that your travel plans are take you to where you go and get you back to La Center safe and sound, so. Well, that's all that I have for the council this evening. Next on the agenda is the attorney's report. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members and members of the public. I'd like to start by thanking Councilmember Williams for his over a decade of service and contributions to the city council. That's quite a, quite a generous gift of your time and your service, Councilmember Williams, so thank you. This Friday, we have another hearing on the Riverside Estates receivership. The hearing is hearing to request the court to approve the sale of the park to the city and to authorize the receiver to sell tracts of property, or easements on tracts of property to the city for sewer water and streets free and clear of the encumbrance or lean asserted by ALJ earth movers. So we'll be doing that this Friday. Finally, I just, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holidays and hope you have a wonderful New Year, and I'll see you in the New Year. Thanks.
Thank you for that, sir. Any councils for the city, or any questions for the city attorney this evening, council? Okay, very good. Our council comments? Councilmember Fox?
Yeah, I just want to say happy holidays to everyone, and the Christmas tree lighting was absolutely beautiful, so good job City of La Center for getting all that coordinated. It was so nice to see the turnout. Everyone was so excited to be out, so that was just really wonderful. So, yeah, just happy to be here and looking forward to the New Year. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd start out by saying thank you to Councilmember Williams. That was a very long time that he served, and there's not a lot of people that are willing to put that much time and effort into into a lot of things, but let alone the city government. The tree lighting was a really good turnout. I was impressed to see how many people showed up down there and enjoyed the treats and Santa and watching the tree light up. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and be careful out there. The weather is turning. It's getting icy. There's been some tragedies in the county just this week already because of some of the, some of the weather issues, so slow down and give yourself some space when you're out there on the road. Leave a little early if you need to, but let's just make sure that there's as many of us still around at the end of the holiday season as there are right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry I missed the tree lighting here. It was very nice. As I mentioned at previous meeting, I was playing Santa for Chilachi Prairie Railroad. All of our trains have been sold out. A lot of children out there. So it's a lot of fun. Again, I'm sorry I missed this, but I do have the red suit for the railroad. Weather is the bad, as Casey mentioned, bad weather's coming in. Please, everybody, take your time, going slow, especially La Center Road coming into town. If that ice is up in the evening, we've seen a lot of accidents on that road before. And as Casey said, they've already had some fatalities within the county. Unfortunately, a young school, school age kid was killed. It was tragic, that family. Again, thank you, everybody. It's been an honor serving. That's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Servini?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to thank Randy for his years of service on both the planning commission and city council and the various committees that you served on as well. I enjoyed working with you, our ongoing banter and your great humor, and the, always the perspectives that you would bring to the meeting. Thank you very much for sharing your thoughts and your perspectives and your vision for the community. You were always very passionate and supportive of the community coming together and growing and growing wisely, and you were a great, great addition to the council, so thank you for your service. And I would like to also just express, you know, blessings and joyous Christmas and a safe and healthy New Year for everyone, and also caution everyone and to sit down and talk to your kids too about being cautious if they're just new to driving in this winter weather. It, you know, kids don't think about a lot of those things when they're, you know, that age, and we, we can remember when we were that age as well and some of the foolish things that we did, so please just caution your kids and remind them that driving is something to take very seriously and to be very cautious. Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have two staff reports this evening, council. The first staff report will be presented by Maria, and I'll turn it over to you, Maria.
Good evening, Mayor Thornton and city council members. The November sales tax disbursement was seventy-nine thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars, which is compared to seventy-one thousand two hundred two dollars a year ago. I attended a couple of trainings this past month, one with ClearGov, which is a new software we are looking to use to display our financial reporting, and I also attended an ICMA webinar titled Managing Service Delivery: A Guide to Outsourcing. As you know, a lot of cities outsource work, and it was a good overview of outsourcing services. Thanks to everyone that made the Christmas celebration a success. The mayor has mentioned these people during the celebration, so I'm not going to name them all, but I did want to get that here in writing for you, and then also mark your calendars for next year's celebration, which will be on December fourth. The stormwater maintenance fee is set to increase two percent or twenty cents a month in two thousand and twenty-two, and I am just going to mute somebody. I'm getting some feedback here. Thank you. As I said, it is set to increase in two thousand and twenty-two. It will increase that portion of the bill to ten sixty a month, and will first be reflected on the February billing, and that's because we bill in arrears. This is in accordance with the three-year plan that was adopted in two thousand and nineteen, and this is the final increase that was set when the plan was established. The city has recommended Christine Sneringer as the representative for La Center for the vacancy on the Clark County Arts Commission. Christine is a local musician, aspiring author, a lover of the arts, and we do believe she will represent our community well on that commission. So thank you to Christine for volunteering to serve in that role. The two thousand and twenty-one population estimates are in, and La Center saw a six-point-eight-eight percent increase and has an estimated population of three thousand nine hundred sixty residents as of July. Ridgefield had an eighteen-point-three-two percent increase and now stands at eleven thousand five hundred and sixty residents. And so just for a little bit of comparison, Ridgefield did have the largest percentage increase in the state. Overall, La Center was number seven. If you take out towns that were smaller than thirty-five hundred, La Center was fourth in the state as far as percentage of increase. We have one more month to go with gambling tax revenue, but we have surpassed our two thousand and twenty-one predictions. And I do want to close tonight by thanking Councilmember Williams for his service to the city. In particular, I worked with him on the Budget Advisory Committee, so he was, had great insight and contribution to that committee, and I also look forward to still seeing you around town and thank you for your contribution to the city. Are there any questions? Sorry.
All right, thank you very much, Maria. Yeah, one button to keep track of here. All right, and there's no questions from Maria. We will move on. The second staff report we have this evening is the Police Department Staff Report, and Chief Richardson will be presenting that this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. This is the crime report for the month of November two thousand and twenty-one. As you can see, one thing that stands out obviously is the auto theft problem, but is a problem not only in the region, but in the state and nationwide. We had seven auto thefts reported last month. One violation of a court order, two vandalisms, two thefts, and one fraud. This eighteen total crimes, I'm sorry, this thirteen total crimes compares to the same period last year, we had eighteen, which last, last year we had less auto thefts, but we have a burglary assault and more thefts from automobile. Next page, please. And this is just a list of all the property crimes that we encountered in November. Again, as you can see, it's predominantly auto thefts and some vandalisms and a fraud of a credit card with somebody who was on a business trip. Next page, please. This is just a map kind of showing you where all the crimes were on our crime map for the last month. As you can see, they're not really concentrated. They're kind of all over the place, and we're still trying to perfect this map. It's kind of clunky. What I hope to do is at the end of the year, kind of do a master map of where mostly criminal activity was. Next page, please. We had one arrest in November of two thousand and twenty-one. It was a vandalism related to a family disturbance where somebody destroyed somebody else's property in the house, and they were arrested and booked into Clark County Jail. Next page, please. This just shows you our two thousand and twenty-one November calls for service. They're in line with what you would expect this time of the year. Obviously, a police-initiated activity based on our staffing levels has dropped over the, over the year, especially if you compare this year to last year. And also, the cold weather is keeping people inside a little bit, and you're starting to see quite a decline in, over the, since the summertime of actually, citizen-initiated calls. And then the total number was one twenty-eight total calls for the month, which is the lowest I believe we had this year. Next page. This is just a monthly comparison again. Last, last year at this time, total calls for service were two eighty-two, and that was with the staffing we had, and it's dropped down to one twenty-eight. And again, you can see the largest impact is the police-initiated calls, which are directly related to officer-initiated activity and staffing levels. And I believe some of this, some of this other decrease is probably some of the impacts of the new police reform legislation that is impacting our ability to, in some cases, stop people based on reasonable suspicion instead of probable cause, so that is impacting our overall productivity. Next page. This is monthly reports by source, and again, it's the total for November. We took a total of twenty-five reports. Twenty-one of those were based on citizens calling in and asking for services, and the four police reports were off the police-initiated reports. Next page, please. I was curious, so I went through January through December seventh. If you drive a Honda Accord or Honda Civic, that is the number one stolen car in our city, it's appears directly to what the national number two car is. Honda, I believe, is number two. Number one are actually pickup trucks, Ford pickup trucks, Dodge and Chevy, and most of those Chevy Dodges and Fords that you see in this pie chart are actually pickups. So it's Hondas and pickup trucks that are generally the ones that are getting stolen. And then there's some other ones that are, one you don't see very often anymore, Saturn and an International Jeep, so. Next page, please. Curious to see where the cars are going. Some of them are staying right here in the center. You've got five. Four were not recovered at the time I put this report together last week. Three went to Portland, one to Ridgefield, one to all the way up to Tacoma, then three in Vancouver. So one of the things I'd like to talk about, I think it's important to relate, we've had eighteen auto thefts, the total this year, plus two attempts, so that's a total of twenty. So eighteen actual cars stolen with two attempts where cars were attempted to be stolen. On, we've known for months who the suspect was, but number one, you know, we don't have an auto theft task force. We don't have the staff to go and surveil suspects, and a lot of these suspects are getting released. This particular individual we were looking at actually had a DOC warrant, and we've seen him driving stolen cars before, but he just takes off and doesn't stop, and we have to let him go. Luckily for us, on December second, two thousand and twenty-one, Ridgefield PD actually saw him in a stolen car, found the car that was dumped, and ultimately they ended up arresting him at the Seven-Eleven down in Ridgefield. And we've checked, and this person, he's a local known offender, lives in the county. He's been arrested numerous times. He's done prison time for thefts, auto thefts. So to give you an idea of what the impact is on a small community like us, you're always hearing people say that people that commit property crimes should never be in jail, should ever be in prison. Well, since December second, we've only had one reported crime, which was a fraud. We've had no auto thefts, and we've had no thefts from vehicles. Now, that doesn't mean necessarily that this is the person that was doing all that, but they're, you know, we're highly suspected. Suspected it's probably somebody that's doing it either by himself or with other people. So what they generally do at night, they'll steal a car, they'll drive around through the community and steal a bunch of property, and then they'll ransack it, and they'll dump the car, and they'll pawn the property, they'll sell it on eBay, they'll sell it for drug transactions. So we, we're pretty confident that's what's happening here. But again, we're hopeful as long as this person cannot make his bail in jail, that we, we hope that the calls will ring like this as long as he's away from the community. So next page, please. And these are just the typical, at this time of year, hey, you know, lock your car, especially if you're going to park overnight. Like I've said before, ninety-nine percent, probably ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of our cars where somebody is stealing something from inside the car, the car's unlocked. A lot of our auto thefts, the people are actually have the, keep the keys in their car, like in the center console of the glove box, and so you have people that actually just get in the unlocked car, put the keys in the car, and drive away. Christmas is coming, so don't hide your Christmas presents in the car, because there's a likelihood the crooks know that people leave their, hide their Christmas presents from the kids in the cars. Keep your dogs on a leash, and if you have dogs that are barking, please be courteous to your neighbors. We've had a lot of complaints, especially since it's gotten darker earlier, of people letting their dogs bark continuously, and we've had a couple of people that have wanted to file formal complaints. Again, catalytic converters, it's a good way to make money if you want to take the time to steal them. At some of the precious metals, again, are about thirteen, over thirteen thousand dollars an ounce, and there are methods, if you get online, that you can utilize. There's devices you can buy that you can actually put over that catalytic converter to keep somebody from cutting it off. In reality, it only takes about a minute to cut a catalytic converter off a car, and you can reduce your chances of being a victim of And you can reduce your chances of being a victim of auto theft. Like I said, take your key fobs with you. Good alarm system, GPS tracking system, something like that. Many of the new cars come with them already. So that's something to keep in mind. And with that, I'm concluding my report. And if you have anything you would like to ask, I'm here for you. Thank you.
Hey, Chief, this is Randy. Can, can we spool back to the pie chart with the different cars?
Yes.
I don't see Subarus on there. Are those bulletproof?
You know what? I don't know if they're bulletproof or not. I could tell you that from my experience, Hondas are not. They're, that's why they're so easy to steal. But maybe the person that's stealing them doesn't like Subarus, you know?
Well, we have a lot of talent. I know my, my girlfriend drove off and didn't have her fob. She was able to get it started, but it got a half a block and it quit and locked up on her, so.
All right, okay. Well, that's good to know.
Yeah, maybe it's a good security system. So anyway, thank you, chief.
Thank you very much. And also, Randy, thank you for your service. And as a fellow former, I hope someday we can get out there on your speech tour.
Oh, yeah. I promise that we'll get out.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Chief Richardson this evening?
Thank you for the detail, chief.
I would like to add that. Because it's getting cold, vehicles tend to drive off by themselves and in the mornings if people are leaving them. Running to warm up in your driveway. So be very careful about that.
Good point.
Okay. All right, chief. Thanks for the report. As always, very detailed and thorough. So appreciate that very much. So that concludes the agenda that we have for this evening, counsel. And of course, tonight is the last city council meeting for two thousand and twenty one. And yeah, I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And. With that, if I could get a motion to adjourn.
As my last official function, may I move to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved in second into adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe, stay healthy.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good night.
Merry Christmas.